Call the meeting to order August fourth, six o'clock if everybody wants to stand with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get the roll call?
Councilmember Alabas.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Ingles.
Here.
Councilmember French.
Here.
Mayor Shippers.
Hey, first thing, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll support.
Councilmember Hopkins.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Ingles.
Yes.
Councilmember French.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Okay, we'll open it up to public comments. You have three minutes if anybody would like to step forward. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comments and move to the third topic on the agenda, the PFAS update.
Uh, thank you, um, Mayor Pro Tem Ingles and members of the city council, sorry, that's a little bit of a mouthful.
Yeah.
I don't have much to report other than last week, I was offered the opportunity by Representative Joseph Fox's office to testify in Lansing in front of a House Appropriations Subcommittee with regard to asking for an appropriation to be made specifically to address PFAS in the city. And so I, along with the representative's legislative director, fashioned together a presentation. It is available online. If anyone is interested in watching it, you can frankly just go to YouTube and look up the House Appropriations Subcommittee on local economic development and you'll find it in a list of all others. Scroll about eight hours and forty-five minutes to then find the five-minute segment, but we are asking for nearly eight million dollars to address PFAS in our community. This would be enough funds to essentially connect everybody in the city that is on a private well, as well as to build infrastructure to everywhere in the city where there are private wells where main infrastructure does not exist. So this is, you know, the, this would be a project that entails not just Marathon Drive, but anywhere in the city where there's a private well, we would be able to put infrastructure in and do the connections. So we're likely not going to hear anything one way or another until much later this fall or even shortly after the new year possibly. So it all kind of depends on how the state's budget process goes. You know, they do have an October one, you know, new budget, but when I had asked about timing, I was told it could be this fall or this winter, so. Jeff, do you have any updates?
Yeah, I do, if you want. Just some PFAS results, I guess. We now have sixty-six Cyclope Pure tests that we have received results for. Three residents have contacted us that are in the M Part area. We sent letters out to everybody, three people in the M Part areas, and we passed their information on to M Part to have their wells tested. Four residents in the M Part area we do know of now have filters on their water. I'm assuming it's a lot more, but this is since our last meeting. We know there's four more in the M Part area that have filters. We're still waiting on results of two Cyclope Pure tests. Those are the last two we have. Let's see, seven residents have self-tested with either Cyclope Pure or Eagle provided us with that data. There are ten vacant lots and four people denied us testing. I think I told you that last time. So for the grand total of ninety-six wells are accounted for, thirty-seven of those wells that are not accounted for is in the M Part area and they might or might not have been tested. And then thirty-six are left in the areas that we're testing outside in the city. We ended the active testing of wells July thirty-first. We, you know, we did door hangers, we did letters, we did door hangers, we were at the fair. We're just not actively going out to have people PFAS test anymore. They know we're out there and if they contact us, we'll test their water, but we're not actively looking for people. I think they know that we're out there offering the test and, you know, at some point they got to say yes or no. This Friday, the wells that were in, the three homes we had in the LDFA area that were connected to city water because of PFAS, well, the two homes that were connected, the one demolished, this Friday, all their wells will be pulled and abandoned. So that will be completed at that point in the LDFA area. And as I told you last, I think our last city council, we're wrapping up the delivery of bottled water. We have about two months left, a little less now. So we do deliver water every week to fourteen residents. Of those fourteen residents, we do know for sure that ten of them have filters already, but they still choose to receive the bottled water. But at some point in the next two months, we will run out. We're giving everybody the opportunity, you know, we're running out of water. You got two months to get the filter installed and then you'll be, have a source of PFAS-free water in your home, so. Just letting you guys know, if there's any questions, I can answer. Anything you have.
How many Cyclope Pure tests do we have left from the initial purchase?
I'd say we probably have about thirty left. We bought a hundred all total, so we probably have, well, we have sixty-six Cyclope Pure, so a hundred subtract sixty-six, well, sixty-seven, sixty-eight because we're waiting for two results, so thirty-two.
Is there shelf life on those?
According to Cyclope Pure, no. I'm, being a scientist, I think there probably is one, but they've told me there is no shelf life on them, so.
Good. Okay, moving on to the next item, the consent agenda. We have minutes from the meeting on July twenty-first. I'm trying to get a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Ingles.
Yes.
Councilmember French.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Okay, we're going to move on to the fifth item, public hearings. Marcus, do you want to introduce the first one?
Uh, yes, thank you. There are two public hearings this evening. The first one, at our last meeting, our finance director had explained that after the city council had already gone through and approved the appropriations ordinance regarding our budget, we had received subsequent information from the county regarding a headly rollback. This is because we grew faster than other parts of the state of Michigan, and as required, we now need to amend the ordinance to take into consideration that very small rollback, which I know is in the details in the paperwork that you all have. It would be appropriate to take comments from the public at this point.
Um, do we have a budget document we want to put up on the screen for this, or Owen's not here, so probably not.
Yeah, we do not. It's just the information that's in the packet.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing for the adoption of the ordinance amending the General Appropriations Act. You have five minutes if anyone would like to step forward. Okay, we'll close the public hearing on that and go to roll call.
Motion.
A motion.
There we go.
I knew I messed up at least one time.
Of course. I make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance amending the General Appropriations Act for the 2026 fiscal year.
Support.
Councilmember French.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Ingles.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Okay, motion passes. We'll move to the next public hearing if you'd like to introduce the one for the Lakeland Apartments Brownfield Plan.
Yes, thank you. Similar to the residential Brownfield Tax Increment Financing, or TIF, plan that city council has approved in the past for projects such as the North Lake Street Flats Project, the Cooley School Redevelopment Project, which I believe you just did at your very last meeting, for Cadillac Lofts. This too is a residential housing development project that does require the very same financial tool in order to make the project viable. We do have some special guests with here this evening. Representing ownership and the developer is Kyle Fryer and, I forgot, you're in there. And Aaron, yes. Kyle, why don't you come up? Kyle has a presentation, and then following that presentation, we also have our Brownfield consultant here with another presentation that'll get a little bit more into the details of the plan itself, so.
Yeah, thanks a lot for having me. My name's Kyle Fryer. Again, that's Aaron Cucci. We're with KMF Construction. We are a residential and multifamily general contractor developer out of Jensen is our home office, so. Yeah, thanks again for having us tonight. We're, we have a project we're working on, we've been working on for quite some time that we're super excited about. The project encompasses seven parcels north of Polister Street, off the east end of Mossers Street in Copier. Copier. The total area of these parcels is eleven point two-four acres. In order to keep the traffic to Major Street's primary access will be from Cobb Street. There's the overall site plan rendering. That's the city parcel to the southeast.
And Kyle, if I can just jump in, just for city council's background context, all that city council is here to do this evening is to discuss after the public hearing and then consider the financial component with regard to the Brownfield Residential TIF. The site plan, the layout, the look, any changes of anything to deal with the development itself, that is all within the purview of the planning commission. And I just wanted to clarify that in case you guys were thinking about going down one route versus another, the different board, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, yeah, for clearing that up. We actually did, at the end of last month, receive a sketch plan approval for this. But the project is R-P-U-D and overall has two-hundred-and-fifty-two units over seven buildings. We planned to break it up into three different phases. Our first phase will be seventy-two units. I don't know if we need to get into this, but yeah, overall, city Cadillac requirements. There's a, you can see in this site plan, there's a fair amount of twists and turns, and that was kind of by design to some extent to slow down traffic and keep speeds a lot slower for pedestrian, pedestrian safety. Also, in the middle of that site plan there, in the middle of the buildings, there's a primary open space within the development. The park area in the middle is approximately one acre in size. This will be for residents and can be used for a large variety of outdoor activities. We talked about sectioning a portion of that fence or fenced-in area off for a dog park.
And Kyle, on the, what is it, the far side on the right, which I'm not sure if that's east or not, is that area like a trail kind of zone, like a walking area, the brown?
Yeah, so the, we won't be putting a trail in the city parcel anymore. Originally, that was part of our site plan, but it's not anymore, so it will just be the sidewalk around the back of the buildings there and then throughout the center of the buildings, yeah.
But could be used for future.
Yep, yep. Yeah, I think that parcel's zone is owned by the city again, is its own open space, so, you know, maybe a park someday or something like that, but. So yeah, we chose Cadillac for a variety of reasons. Its lack of workforce housing, Wexford County needs over thirty-seven-hundred housing units before two thousand twenty-seven, and over thirteen-hundred of those units are multifamily. Obviously, Cad, you guys know Cadillac's a four-season destination with Lakes Trail skiing and all things northern Michigan. We like the proximity to one-thirty-one. From the beginning, local leadership has been amazing to work with. Staff has been awesome. We've been working with them for almost better part of a year and a half to get this going and, yeah. And then one other thing, there's, you know, obviously the strong local employers and industry up here we're excited about and definitely excited to bring workforce housing to Cadillac, so, thanks again. I got a couple renderings too. I'll show you the, what these buildings will look like. We've done this building in the past in Holland and had great luck with it. It's a really nice-looking building and, like I said, yeah, that's it. We're excited about it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And now it's time for another exciting Brownfield presentation.
Thanks. As Kyle said, you know, it's a pretty exciting project and a large-scale project, and I think as we've talked about last time, these were recent amendments to Act three-one, the Brownfield Act, which really provided this opportunity to help workforce housing, to provide financial support, and in my opinion, it's one of the best tools for workforce housing and to provide that support. It reimburses the gap between what it costs to develop these residential units for people that are at a hundred-and-twenty AMI or less and the revenues that are available. Without these kind of incentives, you just can't make the projects work without this opportunity. And so, you know, just roughly, this kind of lowers the monthly rates about two-hundred-and-two dollars a month or so, so it's really that contribution to get those, to get that into that target workforce housing. The great part about it is the state gets to pay for a portion of it. About forty-two percent of the taxes come from state funding, and so for this project, it's a pretty large-scale project, forty million dollars of investment, ten million dollars or so of incentives, about four-point-three million dollars will be coming in, and I like to call it, it's like a state grant over time. Each year, we're getting those dollars from the state. And the Brownfield Plan is approved by the Brownfield Authority. It was approved June thirtieth, and then approved by the Board Council tonight, if approved by the council tonight, and then we have to ask the state for their approval for state tax capture, so we send the work plan to MISHDA. Just a quick refresher on Brownfield Tax Financing. It is really the increased taxes generated by the investment that are captured and reimbursed for these eligible activities. If there's no project or it's not as successful, it doesn't expand as much, we're only limited to what they generate on that project. There's no other obligations for the city, only what the developers will generate on that time. The taxes are only captured on that eligible property. DDAs or other activities have larger areas. It's only the taxes captured on this property itself. And capture is limited to the amount of the Brownfield Plan or the term set in the Brownfield Plan, in this case fifteen years. So there's a limit to that capture as well. Importantly, state and local taxes are captured. Debt is exempt, so the schools debt is exempt from capture, so they will get all of the benefits from that. And importantly, schools are held harmless by the state foundation grants. There's no net impact on the schools. They still receive their dollars per pupil funds. And the law was amended a few years ago to reimburse the intermediate school district for the taxes that are captured, so there's no net effect on schools there. This just gives you an idea about the allocation for that. About twenty-five percent of the taxes are from the city, about twenty-two percent are from the other taxing jurisdictions, six percent is the cap's debt, and then forty-two percent is the state share. So as Kyle mentioned, it's a development of seven parcels that are at the end of Mossers Street, the east end of Mossers Street. This kind of shows the parcels that are included within the Brownfield Plan as eligible properties. There's two-hundred-and-fifty-two units, a minimum of half of those units. All of the units will be at rents of a hundred-and-twenty AMI or less, but we've stipulated that at least half of those units have to be for households at a hundred-and-twenty AMI or less. Sometimes it may be difficult to find all those individuals to fit that, and so they have to hit that minimum. And again, the rents can't exceed that one-twenty AMI, which is eighteen-ninety for a one-bedroom and twenty-two-sixty-eight for a two-bedroom. Kyle said it was over four phases, or three phases. I had four, but a total investment of about forty million dollars, so it's a significant, significant project. They're proposing some additional support for MISHDA, applying this fall for some MISHDA funding as well. And we went, we go through a pretty detailed financial analysis and review of these projects to determine what's necessary for them to cover their debt service coverage ratio and make it a financially viable project. And after through all of that, indicated that about fifteen years' worth of capture, about nine million dollars is the difference. That's been about kind of what we've been looking at in these projects. You know, there's a time value of money, so nine million dollars over fifteen years is a little different than nine million dollars now, but it's about twenty to twenty-five percent of the total investment that we're looking at for the incentive that helps provide that support for the project. So again, there's going to be two-hundred-and-fifty-two workforce units that really can't be financed without this Brownfield incentive. That difference is about nine million dollars between development and revenues. Again, the state's going to cap, going to provide about forty-two percent of that funding for us. Schools are held harmless, and the capture is going to be capped at that number. If they build more or if the taxes are higher, they'll only, they'll be capped at that number or fifteen years, whichever is less. It also includes some capture for the local Brownfield Fund during the Brownfield and then an additional two years afterwards to help support other projects. That's been a valuable tool for the city to provide support for other projects throughout the city. So the request for you to consider is to adopt the resolution to approve the Lakeland Apartments Brownfield Plan.
Just need to open the hearing first.
All right, at this time, we'll open the hearing. There's a five-minute limit on comments if anyone would like to step forward. All right, seeing no one, we'll close the hearing and move to discussion.
Looks open and shut to me. We need the housing.
I have a question on the rest of the process. I know the Planning Commission approved the sketch plan. They talked about a traffic study and a site plan. Does anything come back to council after we approve the Brownfield?
I don't believe so. I believe it all stays with the Planning Commission. We do have legal on Zoom tonight. Mike, am I correct, or does it come back to council? I don't think it does.
Uh, yeah, on this project, probably not, only because it's an apartment building. It's not sort of a division of land by either land division or condominium plot.
Thank you, Mike.
And anybody who wants more information on this, I mean, you guys did a great job at the Planning Commission, so I'd encourage anybody that wanted more information to watch that.
I did, I did go over there this afternoon, right before the meeting. I drove down, parked and took a walk down there. Interesting to see how they're going to hook into Cobb Street. I noticed there was an old two-track that went in that direction, so. But it'd just be interesting to see how that works out. That's it.
I know there was a lot of concern about the traffic and the Planning Commission took, you know, was concerned with that as well, so.
I went to that Planning Commission meeting and it was a good discussion about traffic flow from the public. There was a lot of the public there that had concerns of people that live on Copier and Mossers. And so there's a lot to be taken into consideration, whether or not the timing of the traffic study is going to be done sooner than later was something that was discussed, and I think maybe they are getting a quicker start on it so they can get the results of that study, even though they were trying to capture what the traffic flow is going to be after school starts, because of course that impacts that neighborhood significantly once Franklin School is in place, but they, so there's more work to do on all of that.
It doesn't seem like there's any perfect place to put apartments in Cadillac anymore.
Right.
We are limited by space and you have one, so, we need the apartments, we need jobs, so it's not a perfect place. Well, let's work it out. Saying that, I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution approving Brownfield Plan Lakeland Apartments.
I support.
Councilmember Alabas.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Ingles.
Yes.
Councilmember French.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Okay, motion passes. Now we're going to move to communications. Sandy?
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from six PM to ten PM on September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five for the Great Start Collaborative Family Movie Night.
I'd make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris Street and Cass Street from six PM to ten PM on September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five for the Great Start Collaborative Family Movie Night.
Support.
Councilmember Hopkins.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Ingles.
Yes.
Councilmember French.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Okay, motion passes. Next?
It's being recommended to approve the parade route for, on September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five for the Cap's Homecoming Parade.
I'll make a motion to approve the parade route on September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five for the Cap's Homecoming Parade.
Second.
Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Ingles.
Yes.
Councilmember French.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Okay, motion passes. Next?
Being recommended to approve the closure of Hemlock Street at East River Street and Crippen Street at North Park Street from one PM to three PM on August tenth, two thousand twenty-five for a block party.
I'd make a motion to approve the closure of Hemlock Street at East River Street and Crippen Street at North Park Street from one PM to three PM on August tenth, two thousand twenty-five for a block party.
Support.
Councilmember French.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Ingles.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Okay, motion passes. Now we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you. We do have one item on the report this evening. It's regarding bids and a recommendation for Aldrich Street improvements. We did receive four bids with the lowest bid coming from CJ's Excavating Inc. in the amount of six-hundred-seventeen-thousand-four-hundred-three dollars and seventy cents. Our recommendation this evening, as you'll see in the write-up, is to also include a five-percent contingency for city engineer-approved field changes in unit quantity or scope due to, due to unknowns. So that would bring up the total to an award of six-hundred-forty-eight-thousand-two-hundred-seventy-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. Funds are available within our local street fund as well as our water and sewer fund. The engineering estimate was six-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand, which was broken down into three-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand for the street component and two-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand for the utility component. Both our utilities director and city engineer are here this evening if necessary. Otherwise, our recommendation would be to consider approving the bid.
If approved, when would the construction begin?
Great question.
They would like to start mid-August.
Okay, well, how long, Connie, to, how long you think to me?
Connie, can you go to the microphone, sorry?
Start and finish time, young lady?
Yeah, they would like to start mid-August. We'd give our construction notices out before that, and then construction should take probably six- And then construction should take probably six or seven weeks. Last year, the asphalt plants closed a little early, they closed early November. Usually it's around deer hunting, so we just want to make sure that we're done with the project, you know, well done before that, so. That's kind of our goal.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else?
Nope. I'd make a motion to award the contract for the Aldridge Street Improvements Project to CJ's Excavating Inc. for the bid amount of six hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred, three dollars and seventy cents. And to improve, and to approve a five percent contingency for city engineer-approved field changes in unit quantity or scope due to unknowns occurring underground in construction, bringing a total award amount to six hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Support.
Councilmember Alambas.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Ingles.
Yes.
Councilmember French.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Okay, motion passes. We'll move along to adoption of ordinances and resolutions, and we have two options here. Marcus, do you want to explain those?
I will, I will give it a shot, and then we do have our consultant Jerry Adams here that will clean up anything that I make a mess out of. So, a little bit of a long story, but I'm going to try to be concise. Eight twenty South Mitchell Street, currently in the B three zoning district. This is a former tattoo parlor facility, former, I believe, a former home at one point. Right on the west side of Mitchell Street, sort of across the street from where Dairy Queen is. Owner of the property would like to be able to have the option of doing short-term rental out of that property. Within the B three zoning district, short-term rental is not allowed. And so the owner had subsequently requested the Planning Commission to consider changing the zoning into the B two district where, I believe it's by special use, short-term rental is allowed. Planning Commission debated, discussed, unanimously determined not to approve that consideration of changing the zoning from B three to B two, as it would be tantamount essentially to spot zoning. However, they did publicly, as I understand, suggest that staff prepare an analysis and come back to the Planning Commission to talk about amending the B three zoning code to allow for short-term rental to be an appropriate use. Presumably similar to in the B two district where it's an appropriate use by special use permit. The Planning Commission, I suspect, would likely look at that as an appropriate use by special use permit as well. Ultimately, if that is the direction that they go, this will be back in front of the City Council for a public hearing and for, and for consideration. In terms of what you're asked to do tonight, City Council ultimately has the authority to approve or to deny or to essentially make amendments or change things that the Planning Commission has done. Our recommendation, the staff recommendation tonight, would be to actually uphold the Planning Commission recommendation of denying the, the change of zoning. And then allow this to go back through the process with the Planning Commission. Presumably, they'll be doing that whether it's later this summer or fall, and then back to City Council for a public hearing and consideration subsequent to that work being done. Jerry, have I missed anything?
I think you've covered it well.
Covered it pretty well? So the, the reason why your packet includes a couple of different options was just so that it was spelled out and written out, so that if City Council chose to go in another direction, we already had the paperwork ready to go.
I think the Planning Commission, they've been dealing with this in June and July, they've done a good job. And I think moving forward, they'll continue to do a good job. Can we get a motion or any questions?
I'd like to ask a question. If, if we deny, if council denies and we uphold Planning Commission's decision and then staff prepares, goes back to Planning Commission and prepares an adjustment to the B three zoning description to include short-term rentals, does this homeowner who is currently in a B three zone have to do anything other than then come back to the Planning Commission for a special use permit to be able to?
So.
If it gets approved by?
The devil is going to be in the details. If the, if the Planning Commission modifies the B three zoning to allow that activity to happen by right, then no, the property owner would not have to do anything else. However, if the Planning, and, and of course, that would also be subject to the City Council affirmatively approving that decision. If the Planning Commission modifies the B three zoning and makes it similar to what is in the B two zoning where it's an activity that's allowed only by special use permit, then again, subject to City Council agreeing to change the ordinance, to change the zoning to allow that, the property owner would then have to, once all of this is in effect, file an application with the Planning Commission for the ability to get a special use permit. They would have a public hearing and make that determination at, at that Planning Commission level, whether or not that person or property owner should get the permit to be able to do that use. There's no guarantee that, that they can or not, so.
Well, he's gone through a
Yep.
portion of the hoops that we've put in front of him, and, and I'm just trying to figure out what the next set of hoops will be for this particular landowner.
I mean, the, arguably, if, if you're an interested party such as the property owner, it would be to their best interest, I think, to attend a Planning Commission meeting when they're going to be discussing any, any future changes to the, to the zoning code. And, and just sort of as an FYI to sneak in there, we did receive, I want to say within the last week or two, bids and consultants that we have sought to get their assistance in finishing up the rewrite of our zoning code. City Council may or may not recall, we did receive a grant to help us fund this effort. And that'll be, you know, hopefully coming back to City Council for, you know, consideration after, again, the Planning Commission gets their ability to review and discuss and make changes. I would anticipate it coming back to City Council late this, late this fall, but probably, you know, shortly after the new year. Because it's, you know, it's going to take a process to, to get through, so.
So you're saying this, late this fall, the Planning Commission will be spending their time taking that up?
I hope so, yeah. You know, I, I don't entirely know how much time it's going to take. But I know that we had made a lot of inroads over the last couple of years in, in, in working on revising the code. But having a third party come on and review what we've done and provide, you know, good expert opinion as to how to move it forward and working with our, our new staff, I think will be a great opportunity. And, and hopefully, we'll get something sooner than later to the Planning Commission, which again, all they do is make the recommendations. It still has to go to City Council as well for public hearings and final adjudication, so.
Well, then I'd make a, a motion to adopt a resolution to deny rezoning of eight twenty South Mitchell Street.
Support.
Councilmember Hopkins.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Ingles.
Yes.
Councilmember French.
Yes.
Alambas.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Okay, motion passes. We have minutes from the Cadillac West Corridor Improvement Authority and the Planning Commission that are part of your packet. Let's see, that one doesn't require a vote. We are going to move on to the last public comment.
Continuum here, Pro Tim.
Okay, the last public comment, you have three minutes, if anybody'd like to step forward. Okay, seeing nobody, we'll close public comments and move to good of the order if anybody has anything.
Nothing here.
Nothing here.
Good meeting. I like these meetings that clip very long.
A little different, isn't it?
Anything, Marcus?
Progress is being made on the Diggins Hill project.
Yes, I saw the construction, I drive by there frequently.
Yep, yep, so, you know, as soon as we, you know, have, have time, when we know when we'll, we'll have that. Actually, I think Connie, the ribbon cutting, is it set yet?
Yes.
Would you mind just quickly mentioning, August?
August twenty-third. From nine to noon, we're going to do the spreading of the mulch. It probably won't take that long because we have extra big helpers out there and some equipment. But the path got paved last week, so it's looking really good, the grades are looking good. And we're ready for them. They just have a little bit of earthwork to do in one spot. And then, yeah, so on August twenty-third, nine to noon, looking for anybody that wants to come out and help, pitch in. And then the ribbon cutting will be at noon. And then the park will be open for play. So the playground inspector will be there and make sure everything's all set and ready to go. They're going to start working on it a little bit early. They were going to start August eighteenth for the install, but they're actually going to start on August fourteenth, just in case we have some rain days. So everything's looking great, you guys, so, excited about it.
All right, and with that, we'll adjourn the meeting at six forty-one.